At this time, it is six oh three and our call will see about the meeting, uh, here June twentieth, twenty twenty-three to order. Roll call please.
That's a member of the right side, here. That's a member of the Laila.
Here.
Um, may I try to green? Is Addison, Mayor Hobbie.
Here.
That's another Thomas.
Yes.
That's another Grant, Grant, and Councilmember Hill. Is that us?
Right, thank you very much. At this time, we'll ask for approval of the agenda during the emergency change on the agenda. Uh, here in done, I would give a very much of those.
All right, to move to the agenda.
One minute seconds. Thank you, the discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any objections? Thanks, all were fair. This time, Housekeeping Members, in the end, very likely, speak about what we need to focus on.
Um. I would like to speak briefly on. Um, and this might come in admin. Uh, specifically more is presentation, uh, like to speak briefly about Spruce Street House. Um, I think it's appropriate that we look for, I know that that's been something that we've been working on previously. Um, we're going on getting a manager for any affordable housing that we may have or employee-based housing that we have, uh, was part of our goal. Um, but just to make public note of that, it's a first that we are making, um, and hopefully continuing to make, and from the sound of it, there's been tremendous amount of work committed to try to find uh, a good manager for that place, because obviously it's not appropriate for the city to be managing it or, uh, in any capacity, so, um, glad that feels like it's getting sorted out, and I also would like to at some point potentially visit. Um, once we have that, uh, third-party management system in place, visit, uh, what it looks like for uh, workers and what type of work potentially we can have there, um, alongside what makes sense for us as a community and what doesn't really make sense for us as a community in for offering employee-based housing. Um.
Thank you, Christian. Anybody else with any thoughts before we start it?
I appreciate that. I asked in Housekeeping for the last, we want us to, to re-discuss this first street house, so thank you for bringing that up again.
Yeah. Okay, at this time, public comments, but I'm sorry, the agenda, if everybody would like to speak, um, please go up and introduce yourself, you have three minutes. Mr. President. My box was on that floor. So, um, yeah. I modified the pledge of allegiance, uh, and I guess we'll go back to the original format. Um, I guess it's confusing people where it says under God, I was saying under deity-inspired constitution, but, um, so, uh, pledge allegiance. Do not, Republic of Washington, stand one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to the essence. Uh, I'm hoping we can make this, uh, city councils feel a little progressive and, uh, revisit their previous, uh, change of this and put this back on the agenda that, uh, can we say the pledge of allegiance, uh, for city council meetings? I don't see why that couldn't be, yeah, that way. Um, looking into Denver's newspaper today, uh, there was an article on page twelve of the, uh, front page. Britain's House of Commons on Monday recently endorsed a report that Boris Johnson lied to lawmakers about lockdown parties in his office. Uh, and, uh, a humiliating essential was issued over that. It seemed like there was some discussion about that, three hundred and fifty-four votes of seven upheld that. Is one quote is, it's important to show the public that there is not one role for them and another for us. Uh, another quote is, uh, this matter because the integrity of our institutions matter. Um, this, uh, here will have consequences for the accountability of members of parliament, you tell them the members of the public they represent. So, we keep, uh, rushing into, uh, decisions and, and things that, uh, reflect morally on the integrity of the city council. Tracy, uh, is, has two, uh, positions in government. Um, our city magistrate has a position in Lake County government. Um, we've voted in a city council member that might not, uh, fit the rules, it needs to be examined for a, uh, person to be appointed to this job. Um. Reorders making public land these decisions and, uh, a decision where, um, Sarah Dallas, now on the Saturday, it's our Saturday, uh, who's been a recipient of, uh, uh, jobs on this, uh, board of this government's administration and, uh, Sarah Much, uh, Commissioner, uh, horned in on a public, uh, uh, issue about sidewalks and this recent represented themselves members of the public when they were actually enforcing, uh, things of their administration. Um, so ethics and morals, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Anybody else in chambers or on Zoom would like to speak to the council on either non-agenda? Let's go, please, uh, on Zoom, just unmute and dish yourself, and you have three minutes. Okay, thank you very much. Um, at this time, we have our consent agenda, the general approval of the Bay sixteen, twenty twenty-three minutes. Anybody have any issues with those minutes? Hearing no issues, I would give a very much of the police.
Grant Minus to approve the consent agenda.
One minute seconds. End of the discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any objections, thank you all. This time, your department reports, we're starting with City Administrator.
Great, I actually start by discussing eight oh nine spruce. And Councilmember Luna Leal is correct, uh, we actually had put out last year a request for proposals for a, uh, contractor to manage the property, that was in October of last year, we received no responses. So, uh, what we've done is we've issued a new request for proposals, uh, just about a week ago. And, uh, Michelle or Michelle Maroni, our administrative assistant, has been contacting different, uh, property management companies to request that they, um, make a proposal to manage a property. I think we have one potentially interested or two potentially interested folks. So that would be great. It's definitely, you know, the city's not set up to manage a property. We, you know, running credit checks and, and taking rent payments and everything is is not really the business we're in, but we did it because we thought it was important to have the housing. We've been managing it. Uh, and we will continue to manage it. We can't find a property management company, but we have been really beating the bushes. I mean, I've been tearing advertisements out of the magazines and giving them to Michelle, the cold call people. So I'm hoping that we get, uh, at least one response to the RFP. I think it will close, uh, at the beginning of July during the first week of July, and then as far as the criteria, I just wanted to remind the city council that the criteria you have right now was the criteria that was proposed when we, um, purchased eight oh nine spruce, and I'll send that matrix around to the city council. But, um, right now, i- if, if there, it says if there are two or more eligible employees in any category at one time, seniority could be used as a tiebreaker, but right now, the way the priority list is if there are more than one person, um, looking to occupy a room, and there's only one room, priority would be current city full-time employees, and then current city part-time employees. Uh, city employee candidates who've been offered and have accepted full-time employment, and then candidates who have been offered accepted part-time employment with the city, and then we move to current full-time employees of county, current part-time employees of the county, and then the seventh and eighth categories are current, just people who work in the county, like, they don't have to be employees of the county, that they just work in Lake County, and then current part-time employees in Lake County. So, you can see that the matrix we already have prioritizes people who work, you know, obviously in the area and need housing, and obviously putting our own city employees first. So that's the criteria, and what we can do, if there's, the, the, you know, discussion, we'll send that around, and if there's a consensus that we need to revisit that criteria, we can, uh, certainly do that. But I'll send that around to the city council tonight. Uh, as you all know, it's busy, uh, event season, it was a busy weekend in town. We had the Lifetime Marathon at the Kennedy House, as well as the Gay Pride Parade. I just want to thank the Streets Department and the Police Department. Uh, by all accounts, everything went incredibly smoothly. We had, you know, the, the issue, this is the first time that we've had a parade the same day as an athletic event, and, uh, things went great. Uh, the runners getting snowed on. I think everyone had a wonderful time. I think, you know, the issue with the, the parking on Harrison, uh, we did have to have a number of cars still parked on Harrison shortly before the parade. I want to thank the interim chief, um, he thought to have the announcer announce to all the participants to move their cars and have the CSOs work with folks, and we ended up not having to tow any cars, so. Um, you know, there were a few tickets issued here and there, but, uh, overall, I would have to say it was a fantastic weekend, and I know that police and streets were stressed thin, so thank you both, um, I think your team said an excellent job. Uh, the flower boxes are up on, uh, on Harrison, uh, this is Main Street program. They look fantastic. I am glad that whoever made the decision to wait until Monday so before things didn't get snowed on. Uh, but I also want to thank the mayor and, um, streets and Nancy Bailey from Main Street, because it knows a big effort to get everything out, uh, and so it is really, I think it's fantastic. It's one of those things that you come into a town, you think, oh, it looks really cute, I wonder why, you know, this town is so charming. It's because people put in the effort to, to, you know, the Main Street program puts in the effort to get these boxes sponsored and get them up, so I appreciate that. Um, a couple other, uh, items to note. We are hiring process for our new city attorney, as you all know, um, Christian McCormick left her law firm and uh, Meechaw Hoxton McCaskin has agreed to help us out for the time being, they just don't have the capacity to keep us in the amount of work that we have for their office, and, and so we have put out cities issued a request for proposal for a new city attorney, it closes on July seventh. Uh, we will schedule interviews based upon the number of applicants we have. I have at least one person who said they were interested, but as of right now, I don't have any applicants, so, uh, I think interviews would be important. My goal is to have a resolution appointing a new city attorney. It probably will not be on our July eighteenth, that'd be ambitious. Given when the RFP closes, uh, it would not give us a ton of time to get in any interviews, so it's likely to be ours first. Uh, if any city councilman would like to be involved in the interview process, please let me know, you do not have to be. But it would be, um, you would have a, your, you know, the city council appoints the city attorney. So you would, obviously, will have their information, whoever the staff is recommending will have their information in the packet and everything else, but if you'd like to be involved in the interview process, um, please let me know. Uh, talking about hiring processes, so the, um, we had the Police Department Town Hall a week ago, Monday, and, uh, I have to say, it was, it was a fantastic event, and I want to thank everybody who put in a lot of work to make that happen. Michelle Maroni did a lot of the legwork to get the location pinned down and food and everything else, so the way we, the format for the town hall was, um, we had a few, uh, words by the mayor and interim chief, and, uh, I was the M C, and then, once we had the presentation, we had, um, uh, flip charts around the room where people could comment on the values that they wanted to see, so we had five different charts. One was, um, values of the new police chief and vision of the new police chief, so you could put a post-it up for any of the things you would like about that. And then values and vision as well of the police, um, department. And then we took a risk, and the, the last one we put up was, what can we do better? And I have to say, I, uh, I'm gonna pull up, I took photos of them all. I have to say, the comments were incredibly, uh, productive and helpful. They, uh, you know, I, I think we all acknowledge that there have been some struggles with the Police Department over time. I think the values and the vision, um, emphasize a lot of transparency, competitiveness, getting, uh, the officers and the chief out in the community, I think there was appreciation um, to have a working police chief, which we appreciate, uh, Chief Chavez has done, and, um, I think I'm gonna pull up, what can we do better? I can, I, I didn't bring these downstairs, I didn't have it up hands. Be more proactive and community-oriented policing. Um, continue to improve use of nonprofit referral networks within the county and community. Warm handoff to, uh, additional sources. Embrace and cooperate with grassroots movement for a citizen oversight board, and so I have been talking with, um, Jenny of the advocates about that. Accountability and transparency, communicate out, um, ensuring successful development of employees. Uh, strong leadership between police and community. Uh, someone else wanted the Citizen Community Law Enforcement Board and, uh, continuation of training and, uh, continue to use nonprofit referrals, so I think that the, the overall message is continue to be a strong community partner. Uh, transparency is appointment, uh, important visibility in the community is important, and the relationship with our community members is important, so. Um, I want to thank everybody who came, I think it was a great event, I think our ultimate objective was to have enough people give us feedback on what they want the Police Department to look like. And I was worried we wouldn't get any feedback, but I, I have to say, we, we had a, you know, the post, there were a lot of post-its on, on the, um, on the chart, so I was happy about that. The process now is what we announced at the town hall, is that we are finalizing the position description. Uh, what I'd like to do is some other types, I've practiced some other towns, recently recruited a police chief, and, you know, they've come up kind of like a little fancy, not fancy, but, you know, a little more than just position description, a description of the town and values and what we're looking for. Uh, and, you know, having help pushing that message out, so I think we'd like to retain, we have a HR consultant to help us push that out, but in our chief is gonna help us get that out to, you know, other law enforcement networks throughout Colorado, and so that is our next step with that. Uh, the last thing is, I, city council members may be noticing we're upping our cybersecurity. Uh, I want to thank everyone who completed the security where it's training. Uh, we have eighty-five percent compliance rate, so I appreciate that. Uh, I had a meeting with our cybersecurity vendor, and we agreed to, um, push, start pushing up phishing testing. Uh, and so we rolled that out the other day. Uh, I wanted, uh, so the, it's random, but random phishing emails were sent to fifty-six recipients. Um, only three clicked on the actual phishing email. I won't mention any names, um, but three folks click on it, and what happened, and they clicked on it, and it said, oohs. You just clicked on something that could have been potential phishing, and here's things to look for, and it's basically immediate feedback. We will keep doing that. Um, we also have, based upon the results of the AORIS training, we're rolling out tailored trainings, um, in early July to our employees. So, hopefully, I know this is, um, doesn't sound like a big deal, but we'll keep bringing it up. I, I think it was the, was it Wheat Ridge that was locked down for three days because of ransomware? Uh, so this isn't a joke. I, I, you know, we, we have this as a free program for insurance, and so it's just, uh, really an opportunity to make sure that, uh, what, what, Mayor, what was the other town that got locked down? Wasn't it?
It was a small town.
Mm-hmm.
And Adam's kind of the awesome, kind of the kind of suspension, our assistance.
Right, right. So it's a real threat, and we're trying to be, you know, we're a small town, but we're trying to be really proactive on it, and I have to say, I really appreciate everybody's cooperation. Uh, we don't want to be in a place where we have to worry about, no one ever says that they pray the ransom. Uh, I suspect some do, um, if they're completely locked out of their systems, but, um, we are hoping that that doesn't happen, and, um, so this will, we, at least the trainings and everything else will be, uh, sort of re-uncidating some of the things we know, and maybe getting some of the things that we're a little weak on, so. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, um, as to the process of hiring, uh, when I spoke to the members' presence, uh, lots of the questions were, who is on this hiring board? Um, I think it's very important that we are transparent about who is, not only for the community's sake, but also for ours sake. Because I'm not sure who's on board either, and I would like to know who gets to make the choice of uh, choosing who's going to be heading the Police Department that leases our community. I think that's of the utmost importance to be completely transparent about and give the most opportunity to community members who, you know, have put the time in and put the effort into this work as we have previously for other positions, uh, including chief of police.
So it's not, it's, it's just a panel, so the interview panel, we have none decided, so if there's input you would like to give on who would be on the interview panel, I would definitely like that input. Uh, obviously, I think, uh, I, I will not sit on that panel. Uh, I would like the interim chief to sit on that panel, and if I, there are other people in the community, I know there are some names that I've thought of, who should, I think should be on that panel. So, once we get applications, and once we go through to figure out who meets the minimum criteria, because we're not gonna interview someone who doesn't meet the minimum criteria. We'll figure out who meets, you know, see how many applicants we get. We'll see who meets the minimum criteria, and then the interview panel will interview, and I would suggest that panel can do whatever they want, and suggest that they give, uh, you know, one to three recommendations, I think more than that is not helpful, um, but then I would make the ultimate decision.
Right, um, that sounds good to me, and I'm happy to hear that it hasn't been chosen and just not talked about.
Oh, yeah, no, it has, and I would like feedback on who would like to be on it. Great, thank you.
Any other questions for City Administrator? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have the Police Department.
Good afternoon, City Administrator. Um, you have our recording, your panel. I, I, um, here's to looking for one, a private police officer, uh, who may have been around that, by my eyes, to put that application out. Um, I would say that Officer Carvey always come off of her field training officer duties, and she's now a full-l edged officer, so all four officers we have, we've wedged out there. Which brings ourselves, you know, more, uh, time for, uh, we. Um, you see, uh, when you see there, uh, it's gone up, uh, we're seeing more productivity across the department as far as things going in context. Uh, and maybe some highlights, I'll give them a little quick, you see the rest of our numbers in the report. Um, again, the City Administrator talked to you about the, the town hall, I was a little appreciative and very glad, anticipated that, and got some information to the public about what the Police Department is doing right now, what it has accomplished in the last six months, we have to change. Um, a particular note is the fact that the relationship between the local Police Department and the Lake County Sheriff's Office from what I've heard from individuals who've lived in this city, who've worked in this, both these departments, has never been better. Uh, the sheriff and I have an extremely good working relationship, and when you have that, it tends to filter down to both organizations. And all the officers and deputies are saying, yeah, we've never seen this before, so I think it's really important, that's the only two law-worthy things in this entire county, they must work together. Because if a large critical incident ever happened, it would require both the officers to help each other out and get through the situation, and, and that was indicative of, uh, that would be basically more than just to get it. Um, we just got through a busy weekend, we're having a happy half. Uh, having worked a number of marathons in Denver, I have never seen a marathon that has had all four seasons during the pandemic. To a good extent, I've never worked a marathon, so, you know, I, I applaud marathon runners, but anyone that comes up, runs up here, they truly have my whole and complete admiration and wonderment. Seeing them all come in thoroughly soaked, covering the mud, I'm like, man, you guys are hard people, so good for them. Uh, it went real well, we let out both, uh, both a marathon and a half marathon out to make sure it was safe to the city, and, uh, that worked real well. And then we finished up that evening with the pride parade, I think it went real well, um, I think, uh, we managed to get the city street, Main Street cleared out just in time. And they had a thorough venue, and plenty of view for all citizens and stuff, a lot of good, so, and actually, the sun came out, and it was, again, snow in the daytime, but sunny in Nashville, it was pretty bad, so it was good. Um. And the last, last piece, we're currently going through, uh, citizen contact training, right now, that is an app that we use on our phones, which identifies and categorizes the records contacts that we made, this is required in Set of Bill two seventeen through twenty twenty. Uh, where we have, departments have, are mandated by, uh, the legislature to compile statistics on the contacts they make with citizens, on individuals that are, uh, suspected of, or impacted at traffic stops, ones who report, that are, we have, to leave, that we have whatever reason, or they're a suspect, or they're arrested, or they're in use of force, stuff like that. So, we are now coming online and start compiling that data, and we'll get it on a monthly basis to see what our statistics look like, and that's, it's mandated by the legislature, every police department in the state, having to report that this year. So we're doing that training now, and we assume July for all of us. Any other questions, I can, this is my question.
I heard a question about the same. Sorry, Chris, um, I had a question about the same, I mean, you just mentioned, uh, is that information also public, or is that, like, something that will be reported on in our council reports, or is that just internal information?
It is internal to the city and the department, but it can be stressed out for openness, should that be required by administrator or city council, or whatever, that can be reported. Yes, there's analytics that come into play, yes.
So we could, isn't that reported as data of, of the individuals, yeah, stops?
Yes, it's like, for example, um, I just looked at the training today, we used record bridges as an example. Last month, for the month of May first, May thirty-first, there were eighty-seven contacts with citizens. Uh, forty-seven percent were contact, three percent were arrests, two percent were offense reports, whatever. It resulted in this many arrests, this many, uh, issues of force, and then there's a, uh, racial and gender, and, uh, density breakdown as far as those contacts. So it gives the data of what the department is doing, no names, but the analytical data as far as the work the department's doing.
Interesting, did I answer your question?
Um, hold on. All right, so. Yes, I did, um, so it sounds like then there's the flexibility to, is there the flexibility to be like, well, we want this data to be public, this data to be internal, and we make the decision on it? It doesn't sound like it's that in-depth, it sounds like it's a pretty simple contact list and follow through, and that's it.
Um, it is, and each agency or municipality can make, I think, according to what I understand, is they can make whatever uh, reasonable consideration to make some of the reports.
Thank you.
Okay, um. So, is there any, um, desire to hire local people and send them to this academy? It worked out pretty good last time.
Absolutely.
Isn't that kind of, uh?
Anyone's free to lie, and I, I think that's important, um. We also, I will tell you, recruitment and retention is the worst I have ever seen in my career. Uh, we are now, it's, it's a prevent my situations happened the last couple of years, we're even reverting to stealing from each other. And what I'm saying, we're like, employing other departments and, hey, let me see, which way would we have, what are our benefits, what are our payout? Jumping ship and going to other agencies, I've never seen it like this. Um, my former agency was always a destination agency, and now it's a departure agency, based upon a variety of factors, and I'll just sort of bet. So, you can hire just two pools, you have brand-new individuals that have never been police officers before, and have to be completely trained, and that's from the start of hire to completely finishing on the street, you're talking about a year at least. Or you hire what they call that, someone from another agency, prior experience, uh, inside or outside the state. They come on, their, their training period is much shorter, and they go on the street much quicker because of their past experience in training. and they go on the street much quicker because of their past experience in training. And if they're from Colorado, they're already post-qualified, peace officer standards and training, that's our certification status. If they're already qualified, they can easily step in and within a couple weeks of training what our systems are, then they're independent and go on the road. So, those are our two pools that we look for, when we put out advertising for this stuff. Obviously, a lateral is much quicker to get on and stuff, but you have to be appealing to those laterals in order to get them on your department.
I think the only thing we've learned, the lesson that we've learned and we will change, if we hire candidates that are not already post-certified, we will have them sign an agreement that they will agree to stay with us for a period of time. Or they would need to reimburse us for the training. Uh, I think that's a lesson we've learned and it doesn't, it's not uh, gonna insulate us against everyone being taken away because what I've heard now is sometimes agencies will say, fine, I'll pay that, we're gonna take you anyway, but at least we're not outbid thousands of dollars for the training. So that's, I think, a lesson we've learned in the last couple of years, and we will implement that.
It's a great point, I, I agree, Tracy, I would love to see us hire somebody locally. Instead of, as painful as that is in terms of the timeframe, it's an eight-month transition, but, but I, I would prefer to see that, if it's even possible. The other thing I would say is, we've done some rough calculations about hiring someone, bringing them in, and we keep them, we, we hire them in, until uh, and they're on payroll until the academy starts, so that can, that can flex, but it, we're looking at fifty thousand dollars while we do it, instantly trained and, and, and certified as a police officer. It's incredibly expensive, so, um, but, you know, we'll see, we'll see how this falls out.
And once you have that post-certification, you're eligible to work at any agency in the state of Colorado. Uh, what I've seen with previous case law on this particular uh, topic is the fact that I think two years is the maximum that you can mandate, but you can get a employment uh, contracts that said you are, and if you leave early, then you have to hold personal money back. So it is a good tool, particularly used for smaller areas.
I do have a question on the contact, uh, that's a, a little bit of a tricky business, but so, it's my understanding that you have to record contacts that the police officer initiates. So, a- as an example, you, you initiate a contract with someone and say, can I talk to you, they say no, and they walk away. Do, do you record that as a contact?
It, it is something that you're contacting that person because you have reasonable suspicion or probable cause that they have committed or are going to commit a crime. So, I use the traffic stop for example, so I pull, I'll use the mayor for example, I pull the mayor over speeding, he's doing a hundred and five down here, so I pull him over. And let's say, look, those are taken, okay, so I'm, I get on the phone, I put on her, I contacted a forty-two-year-old white male, uh, in the six hundred block of Harrison, we're speeding, traffic citation issued, uh, no use of force, boom, that's it, takes about a minute to enter, to click all the data, it's a very easy system, and that captured it. Because I made a contact with you, you were not freely it was irrighteous because I had probable cause and you were speeding down, had, you know, the reason, don't, don't say that. And then there's other categories come into play if an officer was assaulted, if, if there's a use of force, what is the type of use of force or whatever, there's all kinds of different categories which it captures in those contact, for example, whether an arrest made, uh, was it a mental health crisis, was the person under um, uh, under drugs or alcohol, so all that data is captured without any names.
I, I guess my concern, if it's concerned, is, is it, is, is the walk third up? So that officers don't get in trouble for not, you know, reporting a contact, and that's all. I mean, I just wanna make sure the officer's still on the screen.
Yes, I think so, it's pretty clear as far as what we have to do and why it's mandated. Um, you know, record a victim of a crime is once mandatory, you don't record a witness, but you do record anyone that is not freely retenting because you have uh, reasonable suspicion or probable possibility they have or, or intended to commit a crime. That is the criteria.
Right, thank you. Any other questions for the police department?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, HR?
Good evening.
It's definitely easier to hear you if you come on up.
So I was able to send out the wellness program to all the full-time and part-time employees yesterday. Um, we had several amazing local businesses all around the city, all around the county that wanted to um, participate, giving us some sort of a donation, uh, not a discount for employees of the city. Um, I have sent out thank you cards to all the businesses to show our gratitude for their kindness and their generosity. The wellness program not only included local business discounts, but also rec centers in neighboring counties, currently we, some of us were swimming and have different options than we have available here. And also, um, full moon yoga down in Bitter Vista, and I believe it's in the water. Um, and also include free local activities such as walking, hiking, skating, the minimal, uh, minimal trail, exploring the nature, hiking, biking up the east side, hiking or riding up the Hager Pass, volunteering to walk the dogs at the anthill. Any activities that help their body and our minds. And it's just been great to work with the community to see how how many, how much value there is to each other, and we want to help everyone take care of each other. Any questions on that?
Oh, please, you're rolling up for a girl.
Yeah, I sent out an email.
I haven't, yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is one of the reasons we're happy to have Erin on board is that, you know, we talked about employee retention and things that we can do uh, to incentivize, make us stand out a little better than some of our competitors and, you know, it's pay is a lot of it, but if there's other, you know, small discounts, we can offer other healthy opportunities. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Any questions? Where? You're off of?
She's like, I'm so ready to be on.
Next up, fire department.
Yeah, it, cause it, oh, no, you can even hear it, just, yeah.
How come he gets proven?
It's, it's really narrow.
Because uh, uh, the further you walk in the aisle, the harder it is to hear, so the back of the room's wool. I'm gonna make Chayton come up too, so, we don't play fair.
What are you doing, buddy? Uh, I'll start out with, I just got a few things on the list here this evening, uh. We're getting into an agreement with Climax, we have a lot of old hoes and hoes that we've received from, from other jurisdictions. So we're going to go ahead and give that to them for roughly about five thousand dollars because they have systems that they need to test annually up there, and instead of them going out purchasing all those hoes and, uh, which would probably cost them more than this. Um, plus we might also assist with what they're going to do, uh, just so that we're familiar with what they're doing on their pumping side. Uh, it's the uh, structure that's over on some county side, um, just to put it in your direct location area. So, I mean, it's thousands of feet of hose, and it's hoes that we no longer need, um, and it's probably the hose that's kind of like on its way out anyways, when we do our annual testing. So what we'll do is we'll just take this funding here and take the uh, three thousand that we have in the operational budget and purchase new hose to be able to replace that, so it's gonna be a good, it was a, it was a good partnership with Climax in order to be able to do that. Uh, we're gonna put on S two twelve course, that's a chainsaw course here locally. Um, that Kane's gonna be, I think, one of the instructors in that. And we're going to uh, work on private property out on County Road three hundred. And we have everything set in place for the liability aspect, we'll make sure that we sign both waivers, uh, department and uh, the homeowner, and we'll get out there and we'll clear cut some of uh, some of their property for them, so. Uh, looking forward to that course, and hopefully this will kick off an annual course that we'll do, um, you know, we'll see how this goes, cause we're doing internally, normally we do it through the college. Uh, but we, they no longer offer that, that course through the college, so we're gonna do it private. So hopefully it goes well, firefighter two course just got complete, uh, Zach Slusky was the main, he's the captain on C shift, he's the main instructor for that, but there was also assistance with that, and that was a, an actual college course. Uh, so we had some, few graduates for firefighter two, which is the next level up in your professional development. The type one final, uh, is complete, the, the pumping was complete. Uh, we are still on track for July, and I'm looking at you, Mayor, I know that you're gonna ask that, so.
Well, I just need to know which year.
Yeah, right, exactly, all right, I get it, I get it, yeah. So we're hope, we're hope, we're still on track for July unless, uh, you know, there's hiccups in, uh, in the compartments. We did have an, an issue with the hose reel that was too big for the compartment, but I think that we found a, uh, an alternate for that. So, and then we'll, we'll do the type three and the type one, I know that a lot of community members have seen the new type three, but we'll do the type three and the type one ceremony at station one together when they get here. I don't wanna do one and then the other, and then add the grand opening down in station two as well, that's just a lot. So we'll do the two apparatus, hopefully sometime in July or early August, and then we'll probably do the grand opening for station two, which should have the certificate of occupancy either this week or early next week. Uh, we're having uh, problems getting inspectors in town since Jerry left, um, but we'll probably have that grand opening after the race series is done, uh, late August, first part of September. And hopefully it's still warm enough so we can have the bays open and the rigs out and, and have a, have a great time down there. So June first was the, uh, it was the timeframe that the new ISO ratings were gonna go into effect. So, um, I, I, I did end up with a paper, I just haven't seen that, that article come out, so maybe I could give you to put yourself to community, I think it's very important for people to understand that within the five mile road, uh, five miles on the road from this station and that station, your, your insurance is going to be a three, so especially those people down there, I just moved a um, huge piece of furniture for one of the community members that donated some dishes and so forth for station two today. And they told me that they saved three hundred dollars on their insurance annually, so it's a cost savings that I think most of the people in Panera are gonna love, and everybody within that five miles. And also now it's five miles from this station too, it used to be five miles and a water source, so really only the people within the, the, the water distribution system benefited from that. But we changed that entire system, so now it's five road miles from this station as well, where their, their insurance rating is gonna be better also, so, yes.
Is the ISO rating here in town, really also?
It is.
Okay.
That's correct. So anything outside of that five is still gonna be a ten, unfortunately. But uh, that's a, that's a huge um, win for uh, the community members, so. And then I'm working with uh, Lori here to give reimbursement on the BFA grant for the two D K radios, uh, and that's a fifty percent cost and the match comes out of the fire pump down, so, uh, so we'll work on that, we're getting ready to submit that one, and then I we're almost caught up on grants, I've gotta cut, I gotta get caught up with Safer and AFG, AFG is the fifty thousand for the bunker gear. I need to give it to Donna before she leaves, and I also need to get with her about the Safer because it's uh, six months in now for that reimbursement for the fourth person on the Indian company, with, through the Safer grant. So I just need to get all those stats and be able to get reimbursement for that. So, other than that, uh, any questions that we have to answer?
Um, you know, you, uh, you, uh, win an additional month for your reservists at the house.
Correct.
Pretty confident, uh, we'll be out of there by the end of this month?
We set a time for, plan for July first.
Right.
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm hopeful.
Right.
But I've been hopeful for a few months and, and there's just been a lot of delays, unfortunately. But yes, July first, I hope.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you very much. Bye, next up, this is this part.
It's something that we need, uh, we have a very advanced one uh, so far, uh, here's gonna be a topic that we did, um, we've been working on, paving colors and dishes up on the west east side of town. So we're getting a lot of water flow there, up there, and we're gonna start working on the west side. Uh, when we get done with the project, we're just gonna give it a start. Um, that's gonna be a paving thing that we're gonna be working on, on the top of seven street. Uh, we're gonna start pairing into that probably tomorrow, and what we'll work out, we've gotta do, we're gonna help with paving and passing and that, what we should do, we gotta go to the court. We get that clear enough for them, the paving company will begin next week sometime, uh, to start the paving. So that should be after me, the Santa vision, I'm wanting to find out about a certain manhole that's been causing a problem for a while. So we're gonna see what we can do about that. Uh, like, uh, city administrator Rory said, that we work with the flower company, uh, we are a very nice looking, I've had personally a lot of comments about that, um, they look very nice. Uh, we've been working on sign post and everything at the visitor center for helping them out with parking and everything. We've still got a few more left to do, uh, they are working on, um, launching their sidewalk at the beginning, cause apparently it was a handicap certified, so they gotta extend out the sidewalks more, do that as soon as they have it all done. With that, um, we had that weekend with the parade and with the heavy hat, everything like this, it went very well. All the signs, well, we set all the signs up, they were safe, had everything ready for them and everything. On a Saturday evening, I picked up all the signs and hoping it looks really good, couldn't even tell if it had much of a break or it was flowing well, the people were very happy, a lot of compliments on how all of this went. Between the police department and the streets and everything. Well, that went well. Um, we've been working for Main Street to get their side-by-side graves for flower and all the water. Uh, we did rebuild and replace a pump for them, uh, rewired and everything on it, so that is all set up and ready to go uh, tomorrow morning, actually will be the first day, so hopefully, you know, well, we've been carrying on, there's a lot, there's a lot that needs to be done. So we should have no problems with that. We have different, uh, different signs all over town, we put up a new stop sign today at the Allen movements. Um, that one, there has never been a stop sign there, within, within a block from that for forty years, and then there's no gonna stop sign, we're gonna have to put one up. There was a lot of concern in the community in that area, um. I talked to several neighbors in the morning while we were doing that, and they're very happy that we did put it up. So, that went well.
Can I clarify that as well, is that, uh, and correct me if I've got my directions wrong, but that um, one direction of that intersection was controlled, so it was the northbound that was controlled?
Would've been the south.
Yeah, so, so in, if you count the intersection, the southbound had a stop sign, but northbound didn't, which it doesn't make any sense, so. Uh, that in itself, uh, was confusing, and I think it was enough that we realized that um, if there was enough, if you look at what we, you're supposed to look at for warrants and engineering to have a, an intersection control, that doesn't make any sense that it's controlled from one direction and not from the other. So, we, we had streets, thank you for the stop sign, in both, there's now a stop sign.
I think the issue with that was because of the self-open right there, and then that's also like, corners of snow that we've had. But I think over the years, it was just kind of avoided, because now we have to worry about stop signs, we're coming. So, I, I've been telling the guys, you gotta watch good stops, and then you run it over, so hopefully, we'll see if it makes the winner.
Did you notice, uh, on the social media posts, they've added a couple more intersections, I wondered, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll say, i- in, in that case, uh, so Tony and I have done our research on this, if they are not that, this is a, this was a unique situation where it was controlled from one direction and not from the other. If there are others, I'll tell you the process, if there are other intersections where we need to evaluate whether or not there should be a stop sign or specific criteria, and we would basically, I think, get RG and Associates, our engineering firm, to come out and essentially tell us the criteria is that an engineer has to tell you, you know, like, look at the number, the traffic, they call it warrants, but there I mean, there really needs to be enough warrants that justify the stop sign, and so i- if we wanted to do something, we could do it intersection by intersection, what I suggested we do is this situation came up, and again, it doesn't make any sense that it's controlled from one direction, not the other, it's unique. But if there's other infections, um, my suggestion was that, uh, I've already asked the inner chief, pull the accident data and see if we actually have problems at other intersections. And see if we actually have problems at other intersections, justifiably other, you know, accidents or anything. And uh then in that case, we have a number of those, then we would hire our gene associates to actually give us a professional opinion because. Technically, you you know, to control an intersection, you can't just do it based upon, you know, comments on Facebook, so.
If I may make a comment, uh I know that we've had accidents at West Eighth and James. Multiple times, coming this way, coming to east since a yield and going out with stops on.
Yeah, so I guess what I'll, what I'll say is let's, let me, let us look into it and I will either do one of two things. Either look at a handful of intersections or we may just need to do a comprehensive analysis, but I'll tell you, it 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 would. Like I said, this is a unique situation, but in order to do any other intersections, we'll just need to pay an engineering firm to look at it and tell. You know, if it's warranted, it's warranted.
I was gonna, I mean, I was the first flower or water for the city of Leftville and I did it with a wagon and milk jugs. Um so I was so pleased that someone else did not have to do it with a wagon and milk jugs.
Over the years, I think they've gone with the sidewalk side and five gallon buckets as well, so. Eight control systems and they converted it to a pump to water. So now we've got about a fifteen coming to garden home, so the whole thing is set up and everything's right here in the whole building, so.
Sounds like it. Is it, that's, that's a dangerous thing for us to know as backup though, you realize.
I had a question following up uh the comprehensive planning around, so it's the last time we had one.
Well, our comprehensive plan needs to be updated.
So then it might make sense to hold off on any potential name?
Hmm, so your comprehensive plan wouldn't get detailed enough to, I think, indicate what intersections have stop signs, so your comprehensive plan is. A I always refer to it as, it's like your constitution of the United States, it gives you ideas of. Um where we would see potential residential development coming in the city, what about our transportation systems? Where would we want, if we wanted to attract industrial or light industrial or or business or retail? We, we decide like, okay, what we could make sense and then as you decide on your comprehensive plan and you look at your zoning, it does that match? So like, what you don't want is spot zoning where you're like, oh, this person looks good, we'll, we'll zone this, you know, uh retail. And then you've got retails in, in, in amongst residential and it doesn't work, you would, you would say, oh, this whole corridor looks like it would be. Good, maybe we should incentivize that to be, you know, more retail, so our constant comprehensive plan needs to be um. Updated, I think we're gonna let um Jayman have a baby first and then we'll put down a new slate.
Yes. Still makes sense that we, unless those incidents seem egregious, which I don't know enough about those. Areas and it sounds like the work is being done to kind of figure out enough about those areas, but. Uh to kind of hold off on any spending plans until after uh such plans are made so that. Uh we can revisit and do it all at once and it's not like this piecemeal thing. Uh it just makes sense to me and uh makes sense to continue to do.
We'll keep up monitoring everything and the requests that we have, we'll then keep track of those and we will go with. They start getting space and then until we can do more of it. Uh continuing on, um I do have one of my guys, he's uh on top of site like making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Only between the hours that they're supposed to be, so far everything's been going very well. We had a couple little hiccups here and there, they're straightening everything out, so so far sideways is going along what they're supposed to be doing. And finally, I think the last thing we love. Oh, uh we've been doing our regular trash pickup, we're gonna be doing those pretty much daily. We've created a recovery increase in traffic interest that we have right now. Uh we are gonna start with State Street, uh Big Street Park down on Second Street. Uh we did have some uh interested volunteers, we cleaned that up, uh we're still in the process of talking to them. Uh we did have a trash can there, uh there are been several there to pass, but they disappeared. So this time we changed to a quote. So this one's not gonna disappear easily, so with the guys who are watching, hopefully we'll keep an eye on that. Think of their network. Onward and upward, I think, is about what you're saying.
I do wanna tell you that I'm always so proud of you flowers out, it's, it's a major effort, we're seeing more this year. Uh and it's because we, we've expanded the program, we now have sixty flower pots out, plus six of the big ones. Plus ten hanging.
I think we have more than six.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, it's possible, everybody will ask that, but nonetheless, um it looks fantastic, so. Any questions for Street Park?
And your honor, if I may add something to this real quick, we're doing um. On the parking change in front of the post office, it only took two days to transit. Uh with a little help and a couple of police cars parked in front of us and but we've seen no issues at all, it's been. So that transition went on pretty good, well, and kudos to Jake, right, and also kudos to all, all assistance on the parade, all stuff too, they've been. Very good to live with and that's, that's important, so we try.
I have to leave. I'm having a face time with my son who's stationed in Korea in about fifteen minutes.
Thank you.
Next up, you're at the animal shelter.
Good evening, everybody. Oh, sorry, it says the Zoom app is unable to access my camera, so I apologize, you won't see my lovely face. Um so we had a busy month of May, we have been since middle of April over capacity, which means. We have too many animals and not enough kennels. Um the majority of that were from dogs that were on some law enforcement holds, so of course, we're happy to help with those situations. Uh just made it a little difficult on the staff and kind of where to put the dogs, so. That's also why we were not able to take surrenders for the month of May, we literally did not have anywhere to put them. Um we did have four adoptions because there were four unclaimed strays, so we were able to get them out and adopted, which was great. In total, we had twenty-two impounds, so both city and county added up to twenty-two. And then we had sixteen holds. Um if I don't have any questions about that, I will move on to the current events or future events.
Uh I do have a question, the sixteen holds, how many, how many of the holds are still there?
Um none, so as of the beginning of the month when we had court. Um if you see further down, there were ten counts of cruelty for the city court. So those puppies, the six puppies were surrendered to us. Um the three dogs were from the county, so that was a sheriff's office situation. One of those dogs was surrendered to us, um but the other two dogs were returned to a relative. And they did not count, the three adult dogs from the county were not counting in the six. Um or the ten counts of cruelty with the city.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um so upcoming this Sunday, we are partnering with um Res Dog Rescue, they reached out to us about doing a low-cost clinic. They go around the state as well as the Four Corners area to offer low-cost vaccine options to communities in need. They can get about a hundred and fifty dogs in on Sunday, so hopefully we get a nice turnout. We did move our July first yard sale, it will be in August, so for our next department report, I will have a date on that for everybody. And then July twelfth, we are gonna have our art fundraiser, so that's gonna be from six to eight at Freight for thirty-five dollars, you can paint your pet. Um that money will go directly back into the animal shelter and then you will get a lovely portrait of your pet that you paint. The staff does help draw, so you don't have to have any drawing experience.
Okay, thank you, any questions for the animal shelter? Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Uh next up, we have the deputy city clerk.
So not a lot of changes, um just wanted to update that family dollar cannot um. Attend liquor license because according to car statute, in a town with less than ten thousand. We can't have another liquor store, takeaway liquor store within three thousand feet. Um which they are, we're gonna be done, you know, massive liquors. And then Earl's just turned in their application for renewal, um has a marijuana and that is about it.
Any questions for deputy city clerk? Uh I have one real quick, it shows hundred sixty-four licenses have been renewed. And you have four more renewals have been submitted, that's hundred and sixty-eight.
I just got another one today.
I understand, oh so, but we saw twenty on, on waitlist, but but oh how, how does the math add up to one seventy-one? I guess is my question.
Once I clear out those five that are in there, I can pull like the three renewed.
Okay, thank you very much, that's. Any questions for the deputy city clerk? Okay, thank you very much, next up, uh we have building department, which is just three fourth, county sends us. Um and then we have uh by reference four.
Alright, new mayor council, I'll throw the monitor monthly at a day with just on it on the. Uh we're remaining pending applications, we had applications, the circle K. Initial use permit application for electric vehicle charging stations, um the circle K gas station on the southern Harrison. Right now, the public hearings for those for that application is T P E. Uh they are responding to stat comments, I'm wishing for sidewalk and landscape strip to uh basically increase pedestrian improvements there. On one strip and they are also requiring to see that commons. Uh so once uh they do resubmit, we'll have a public hearing out in front of the city's unofficial city council. In terms of the river, I have all these, uh so uh the last council meeting, I believe, where we. Discussing the S A amendment and extension, uh so the update on that is that that amendment was provided to the developer, but uh. Um but was provided to the developer after the six fifteen deadline, the city attorney, we can, we can have to. Um to provide, uh to draft that document, get that to the city, to uh the developer. Um so we kept, we're giving that to them after our enforcement deadline, we extended the second use to the deadline. For them to uh review and execute um but upon, I mean, for two weeks, so June thirtieth is their new compliance deadline. Uh they have, they did agree to the council's amended terms from the council meeting. Um so that was, that was good, right now, the city attorney's office is reviewing some questions. Um that I have, the, the city attorney's office has and the developer has. Um and I'm hoping to get that executed, get all those questions answered to the developer, execute that this week, that's my, that's my. The city's consulting engineer on the sixth, um up to Mount Uisco did uh again um their inspections. The sun's coming, I'm really hot, I have a little space here here for a second. Uh did, the city's consulting engineer did uh again the summer uh inspections. And I'm waiting a report from the city's consulting engineer regarding the status of the improvements that have been concerned since their last report. Which was in the summer of twenty twenty-one. Um so stay tuned for that. And then the last failure date is regarding the phase two, most of you, the problem is the massive piles of rock and soil that are out there, the rock crushing operation. Uh so this came to my attention uh at the very beginning of June. Um I called C P H or I emailed T P H E, uh that was the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And the Division of Mining Reclamation Safety. And is like, those are the, the two state agencies that might have some oversight and in terms of uh what's going on, we don't have. We have some, we don't have much in our city who, who regulate this. Uh so that is asking the state if they could advise the city, um if there are any um practices that the developer must be adhering to. And if there are any state regulations that apply. I did receive an immediate response from uh D R M S, uh they um said they would be coming out by following Tuesday and they did. Uh C P H E didn't, did not respond uh until, I believe it was week, it week four last. But they, uh but both agencies did come out and do an inspection, essentially the um two business states after I followed. For all email, um and then they also received other complaints here in town, I think, complaints or follow online. Um so they did come out and completely inspected, uh D R M S responded to me, this is not a thing that was included in the memo on your packet. Um so since, since last, right. D R M S responded saying that uh there's no mining activity being conducted, um that's their jurisdiction when, when there is mine. Uh they're saying no material is being moved from, uh being moved aside or being sold. All this material is being used for onsite construction, uh so that would be for like the, the foundation, the rocks being crushed for, for foundations. Uh for buildings and soil will be used on onsite as well, so. Uh the, there's no, in terms of the D R M S, they, they do not have any concern, they all, they, they did receive the request and documentation. From the developer, um they met the developer and essentially the developer is okay to the D R M S. C P H E is another story, um I didn't receive a, well, frankly, it was an confusing email. Uh around C P H E, um just trying to summarize that, so they were stating that. Uh C P H E was reaching out to the developer for reminding them of their best, of their um material management plan. And their dust control plan, to remind them to be compliant with that, uh and they said that uh if the developer continues to not be compliant. Then uh we can use our city to look for the force. Uh so I uh spoke with the mayor, the administrator, and we uh emailed um and reached out to. Uh C P H E requesting a phone call for clarification, um saying that we're trying to. Turn it, the city needs to take any action and we're leaning on the state here to give us guidance to enforce their documents, specifically the material management plan. And the dust control plan, um as of, as of right now, I have not heard back from C P H E. So continue uh to follow up with C P H E, so I'm unders- um understanding if there is any action. That the city needs to take, uh or the state is going to take any action. It's my understanding the developer um has that material, that, that equipment. Um that they're using to crush all the material on site rented to the end of the month. Uh so they are, you know, expected to be in operation for at least another week and a half. Um I did uh immediately, um at the beginning of month, um reach out to the developer, required. Uh watering uh be used to um for dust control. And developer did implement um water, watering mechanism on the, on the equipment, the, the equipment, the pressure equipment has, has watering apparatus. Um they did implement that, uh so that's the update I have on that. That's kind of the bigger ones, so are there any questions specifically on that?
I've got one quick question.
Yeah.
Uh do you know is the developer doing any of the local soil operation on the phase three of the real estate property? Or is it limited to phase one, phase two?
Uh so the physical location of where all of that um. The, the material that we are right now, um is in phase two, phase three will be um on the north side now when we drive.
Okay, so they're not touching phase three at all.
Correct, and, and that's not actually their property, fading west is purchased that property and in terms of the, the law you were asking there. Um so now that's all, it's, it's limited to phase two, um from my intel.
Okay.
Alright, uh moving on to code updates, just continues to be a lot of code updates. Um you, you have something in your, your guide tonight regarding both these, both the um historic district amendments. And the land use stable updates are scheduled for um second reading for July fifth. You know, I'm a wish of the night to, to reschedule this. Um all of the advisory team recommendations, I'm hoping to come back through the planning zoning commission next week. Uh with red line revisions for them to review regarding uh incentive zoning. Um and density laws for, for four one. And then just uh wa- wrapping up with miscellaneous updates, uh just continue to be involved on the uh developing subcommittee of the regional housing authority. Uh that continues to be um very interesting, those continue to be very interesting meetings, trying to make some things happen. Um in terms of staff training, I virtually attended the American Planning Association Conference. Uh Philadelphia, so I've received online uh credential maintenance for my reporting period. Uh did attend, some staff members attended and Mr. Mayor attended as well. The designation ceremony of the Golden Borough on the National Register, so um of the certain places. Um so that was really cool to be a part of that. And then last thing is, uh I did, as, as well as council member, we attended the. Um a tour of the fading west factory, monitor home factory in Wemba, so that was particularly uh cool for me. Because they were building uh the last few boxes uh for a sixty. Um sixty unit apartment building, um that I processed the entitlements for and the permitting for, it was actually. Um, that I processed the entitlements for and the permitting for, and it was actually my last city council meeting. At Breckenridge where that project was approved and I started Bloodville next week, so I just, just last week, I had to seal the boxes, um, being. Um, the last few coming off of production line, and it's my understanding that as we speak, they're being shipped over, uh, for construction in in Breckenridge. Uh, any questions for planning?
That is kind of exciting. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have our sales tax comparisons. Uh, they 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 did click along, notice next month, there was a huge jump last year, um, and we never knew.
It's an anomaly.
It's an anomaly, that's correct, uh, and so I think what we'll see reflected in the next month. Will be something less than budget, because the budget was based on an average across the board, rather than, you know, you know, engaging and analyzing every single month, so. Um, uh, I'd love to see an anomaly like that again, but I don't think we will. Next up, we have the financials, Donna, wake up. Oh, there you are.
Um, I I don't have a lot to report, I apologize for the lateness of everything, um. I have been working with the audit, the week of June fifth, I was gathering all the information that they asked for. And then last week, um, the week of June twelfth was the actual audit, so I was trying to pull stuff that. The questions arose from the the information that I sent them from the week before, so it's been a very busy two weeks with the audit. Um. But it is coming to an end, so hopefully here, pretty soon, we will hear, um, so far, everything looks good. So I don't think we're gonna get any red flags of any sort, but that's about all I have to report, unless there's any questions.
I I don't have any, the budget overall looks very good, very stable. Uh, I I did, did have a question, I haven't checked my email late this afternoon, did you receive the information that we requested from, uh, Commissioner Marcel?
I have not gotten that information, um, I did. Yes.
All right. Any questions on the financials? Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Next up, we could pay the bills. And there are lots of them. Everybody get a chance to look things over and and see if you have any questions. I was looking at these Google Workspace business. Plus accounts, seventy of them. Quite expensive, actually.
Yeah, we, uh, we did that last year, we did upgrade our Google account. Uh, and Dan, or that, or it seems, or I think we're supposed to explain the the difference, but we upgraded for a couple of reasons. Uh, one of them being that when we get requests for open records act requests. The account that we have now is easier for us to search for records to that we have to produce, so it's a. It was a bump up in the, uh, program or the. The pricing program that we use.
And this new. This new program gives us unlimited storage, so the emails can stay there forever.
Are you looking at this show, this one doesn't even have eyes? Should be on there.
Uh, this should be good, though.
All right, thank you.
Uh, take a quick second, uh, Dana, I noticed you're on, just thank you for joining us.
Sorry about my delay. I'm here now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this, at this time, I'm not sure if you, what you may have missed, we're discussing the, uh, the temporary use permit from the Boom Days. Uh, committee, Boom Days event. Um, and we're seeing if anybody has any questions regarding, uh, Boom Days event plan.
I personally don't, the last thing I heard was you guys were looking at the bill, sorry.
Got it, okay, thank you, um. Last call for questions. In which case, I would entertain a motion, please.
Grant moves to approve the temporary use permit for Ludville, Boom Days Incorporated to host Ludville's annual Boom Days. Festival on Friday, August fourth through Sunday, August sixth, twenty twenty three, from seven AM to eight PM with. With the attached climate, I don't know what that means.
That's something now, yes, we do forever.
Okay, with the attached.
There you go. Near the discussion. We'll call this.
Mayor Proton Green?
Yes.
Yep. Councilmember Hillis, accent, Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
Councilmember Lynn O'Leary?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
And Councilmember Tenness?
Yes.
First, thank you very much, good luck. Okay, this time here, I have a little wish, presidential vote series in twenty twenty three, opting in to the rural jumpstart program.
Great, thank you, so, uh. This is something that was presented to the city council a while back, and, uh, there was a presentation, Morgan Van Cat is here again. And what I've asked her to do is to briefly make the presentation that she made before, because we have a new city council member, but. What has, um, transpired since the last presentation is the county has opted into this program. And by statute, the county would need to opt in, and then the city would need to opt into this program. And then once Morgan's finished her presentation about the overview of the program, I'll tell you. Um, I've done a little more research on, you know, the 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 impact to the city and and what. Essentially, uh, the the cost may be to the city to opt into this program, so with that, Morgan, can you hear us? All right.
Yes, hi everyone, and can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Great, I'm, I'm always scared if I go full screen, I'm gonna ruin, I'm gonna jeopardize what's good right here, so I'm gonna keep it on the admin side, but. Thank you all, um, for having me back, uh, going to give just a real brief overview, um, as you might remember, um, rural jumpstart is a tax relief and grant program. For businesses that start or relocate into rural economically distressed parts of Colorado that we call. Rural jumpstart zones, of which, um, Lake County, as of last week, is one. So I'll briefly just whiz through, um, these benefits, but there are two main benefits for businesses and it's tax and grant. Um, you're able to see here, uh, all of the various tax benefits that are eligible for the business, um, and then. Uh, also just wanted to note that there is, um, a state income tax refund for qualified employees of that business as well, so. There's those three main tax incentives, um, for the business, and then one additional one for individuals that qualify, which is really nice. Um, the next benefit is the grant benefits, and you can see here, there's two different types of grants that are available. The first is a twenty thousand dollar general operating grant for the business, this is a match at twenty five percent, meaning the business spends eighty thousand dollars on. Um, any reasonable business expenses, and then we would match twenty thousand dollars of that. There's also a twenty five hundred dollar grant per new hire, which you can see the qualifications below of how we reach that new hire status. Um, the big thing to note here is that the qualifications for an individual to receive tax benefits. Are the same as, um, it would take for the business to receive the twenty five hun- hundred dollar grant per new hire. Um, so meeting that average annual wage, being a full-time employee, spending eighty percent of their time, um, in the zone. And being employed with the company for at least six months. Um, you'll see here that the grant program does expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. We are working on getting an extension on the table for the next legislative season, obviously, we can't predict what will happen, but. Um, we are hoping, uh, to get this extended so that we have more time to spend on these funds. Uh, next, I wanted to briefly discuss the rules of the program and what types of businesses will qualify. There are five main requirements for a business to be able to qualify for this program. The first is that the business cannot be operating in Colorado at the time of application, they can be operating out of state, they can be a startup. Um, they can be doing research and development, or even developing some prototypes, um, they just can't be actively selling a product or service at full capacity. Next is that the business cannot compete with a similar business in their county or in the adjacent economically distressed counties. Um, one really unique thing about Lake County is that, um, none of the counties surrounding you, um, that are adjacent to Lake County. Qualify for this program, so essentially, when we do a competitive analysis on a business. Um, we're just going to be looking at businesses that exist in Lake County and making sure that we're not bringing in any competition to those businesses. The third requirement is that the business must export a product or service outside of Lake County, again, just trying to generate economic activity. And finally, the business must hire at least five employees over their four years in the program at or above that county's average annual wage. Uh, I know I did just say finally, but, um, there is one more rule, uh, that is easier, um, to remember, but. Any business that wants to apply for the program must be sponsored into the program by, um, a sponsoring entity. Uh, Southern Colorado Economic Development District, um, was just approved as a sponsoring entity at our last E D C meeting. Um, so that will be one sponsoring entity for the county, or businesses are more than welcome to work with C M U, W C C C, or C M C if they choose. So, what's next for the city, um, I know Lori already, I'm sort of alluded to what we're asking for today. But, um, Lake County has been approved as of last week as a rural jumpstart zone, and now, um, we're really just trying to get, um, the city of Ludville on board. Um, so that you guys can also opt in to become a part of that rural jumpstart zone, giving businesses in your community a chance to access these funds and tax benefits. Um, and then my last slide is just saying what you would be agreeing to, um, if you agree to opt into the program. And that is providing relief from the municipal business personal property tax, if it exists, um, for the new businesses. If that tax does not exist in your, um, town, then you would just say if it does exist in the future. Um, only rural jumpstart approved businesses would be exempt from that tax, and only during their time in the program, which is either four years. Um, with the availability for one extension, so up to eight. That was really quick, I tried to be short and sweet, um, so what questions can I answer for you all?
It seems pretty clear to me, it seems like, uh, a nice opportunity for the right fit, I just can't even imagine in my wildest dreams what the right fit would be. Um, it's just hard, hardly imagine it, I mean, that's a.
And and that ties into my comment, I was gonna say about the fiscal impact, so. That came up last time is, um, does the city even receive any business personal property tax? And after, um, talking to the county, it essentially right now is rolled into the property tax that they remit to the city, but, um. Donna and I were able to determine, uh, let me see here, as of. Last year, it was about thirty four hundred dollars total that we received for the whole year for this personal property tax, so. last year, it was about thirty four hundred dollars total that we received for the whole year for this personal property tax. So how many businesses that is, we're gonna need to get with the assessor's office to figure out how many businesses actually contributed to that total amount. But we're not talking, if, e- even if we for when all the businesses we currently have, which isn't the case, it's just businesses in the future. Right now, it's, as of last year, it was only about a total of thirty four hundred dollars that we received in business personal property tax. So it is not a, it is not a financial hit to the city to do this. And I think on the chance that someone can use this for economic development, it's a nice thing to have.
Any questions or thoughts?
Just one thought, uh, more precise if I say fully group program and I'm cool with it. Uh, just interesting that the tax break at the employee or individual level is only for people at or above fifty two thousand and not below. Interesting choice. Um, not being said, I understand like the obvious to incentivize the, uh, businesses to pay the people at that or above wage. But, um, kind of unfortunate for those making less than that, um, which would be the people who probably would need it more. Um, but other than that observation, I think makes sense. It makes a lot of sense. And if someone can use it, then by all means.
That's an interesting perspective. It, it sounded like to qualify for this program, they had to have at least five employees at or above that. Is that right, Morgan?
That's correct. And, um, a really interesting comment that, uh, we haven't received before. So definitely appreciate, um, your thoughts there. But yes, the business is, um, required to hire five employees at or above that average annual wage.
But they could also then have employees below that. Is that correct?
Correct. They just wouldn't qualify, um, individually for the tax benefits and the business would not qualify. Um, those employees would not qualify towards their new hire grant that they would be receiving.
And, and that part makes sense to me. Uh, you don't want to incentivize businesses to hire people for lower wage that might not necessarily be realistic to live with. Um, and I definitely appreciate that part, but then to carry that to the employee seems a little bit like, well, if they're gonna do it anyways, you might as well. But it's not really anything too major, in my opinion. I don't think you're gonna see too many businesses of this size hiring more than five people anyways, so. Um, just enough, an observation that I had made, but again, totally in favor of and supportive of.
And one more thing. Oh, I apologize. One more thing that I, I would like to add is that in order to qualify for that average annual wage, we do allow, um, quantifiable benefits to be, um, contribute towards that. Um, because we do know that since it is an average, it does skew a little bit high, it seems like. Um, so that's one way that we're working to, um, combat that issue.
Well, that's real easy. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Thank you. In which case I would entertain a motion, please. Lumen Lennan moves to approve resolution number twelve series of twenty twenty three, a loose, a resolution opting into the rural jumpstart program.
Lauren, some second.
Any other discussion? We'll call this.
Mayor Proton Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Lobby?
Yeah.
Councilmember Luna Mayall?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hillis Absent.
Morgan, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Looking forward to working, working collaboratively with you all and hopefully getting some funds in your community.
And then Morgan, just let us, let me know what our next steps are.
Absolutely. I'll email you right now.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next up, we have a resolution of thirteen, twenty twenty three, uh, rest in favor of the terms of office for members of the Ludville Urban Rural Authority Board. And, uh, so we're pretty much spelled out here, but.
Yeah, this is a, a request of our city attorney Linda Mishaw. She, um, drafted this resolution and brought this forward. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. It clarifies the terms and then the process of selection for the board members. And, um, uh, Evan King is here from, uh, Linda's office. And I, I don't have any, um, further information on this one. And if you had technical questions that Evan could not answer, we could potentially try to lend us, maybe.
Uh, do you have any questions or concerns? Uh, just for context, this was essentially brought up at the last Laura meeting, correct? Uh, conversation, uh, unfortunately, it sounded like there wasn't a point for it, but uh, conversation that could have been had then. Was it had before as well?
I believe it's, it's popped up from time to time, or I couldn't definitively say.
I've got time meetings.
Yes. Uh, there's always been some, some confusion.
Yeah.
What are we? Any other questions or concerns? Uh, then I would entertain a motion, please.
Grant needs to approve resolution thirteen series of twenty twenty three, a resolution confirming the terms of office for members of the Ludville Urban Rural Authority Board.
Luna Lennan seconds. Zero discussion. We'll call this.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yeah.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
Councilmember Lynn O'Leary?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hillis Absent.
Okay, thank you. Well, the next two action items are, are scheduled. Um, uh, of second reads in both cases.
And council, keep this simple and straightforward. Uh, tonight, I'm requesting, uh, motion for both ordinance number two and number three, uh, to this year. There was a administrator there, um, and with the public notice and both of the, at third reading, both of those ordinances, uh, there was a, a motion to schedule the second reading of a hearing or date certain, which would have been tonight, um, but we need to move that out into life. So I'm requesting, um, two motions. And probably mine is one of the, let's do this two motions. Those are on page one, three, and four of your packet at the bottom, uh, the respective numbers.
Okay. Any questions for pleasure? Yes, please.
So our city council meeting on the eve of Wednesday, but the.
Yes.
Correct.
Good catch, catch. I was gonna use, you know, it actually is not even on here, so.
Okay.
What will be doing before? Wednesday, the fifth? Okay. I may not be there. I see. But I am scheduled to work. Either I also feels like if there's a problem with them. Dana?
I can be there.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not available.
Yes, well, two people who will not be able to be there.
I'll be there.
All right, thank you. I will try to make an emphasis. I am scheduled for a morning shift. All right, thank you. Uh, at this time, uh, we have, we'll have two motions. I will entertain, uh, the first motion for, uh, actually, in the order we have in here, uh, ordinance number three is the first motion. And.
Grant moves to reschedule the second reading and public hearing of ordinance three, series of twenty twenty three to this city council meeting scheduled for July fifth, twenty twenty three.
Lumen. Lumen Lennan seconds. You're good. Any other question? Uh, is your comment about this particular motion?
Well, it's about the input on the, the, one of the elements of what the, uh, P and Z thing that we talked about. Remember the?
Table uses.
P's and the C's.
Yeah, so that will be when, Wednesday, July. This, this motion would schedule our public hearing.
Why can't I input it now?
Because it's not a public hearing.
Yeah, this is not a public hearing, having a public notice.
Okay. That gives us clarity. Thank you, Steve. Um, any other discussion? We'll call, please.
I'm, I'm sorry. Could someone second? I didn't hear.
Yeah, I'll read it down.
Okay. Um, and Councilmember Luna Mayall?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Laritson?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hillis Absent.
Great, thank you. And also I would, I'd take a motion on, uh, this is, uh, uh, ordinance number two.
Um, Luna Lennan, this is scheduled for the second, um, reading and public hearing of ordinance number two, series of twenty twenty three to the city council meeting of July fifth, twenty twenty two.
Tom, a second.
Any other discussion? We'll call, please.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Lynn O'Leary?
Yeah.
Councilmember Laritson?
Yes.
Councilmember, or Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
Um, Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hillis Absent.
Okay, thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Uh, this time we have public comments and I was of the, I mean, we should speak about it. All right. All right, uh, let's check that board again, so. All right, so another article in today's paper was, uh, uh, the dialogue between, um, Secretary of State Lincoln and, uh, desire pledge to save for critical giant, I, China. Um, you know, on our side, we have a whole list of things that, uh, that we're not happy with China. China responded i- i- in part to is necessary to make a choice between dialogue for confrontation, cooperation, or conflict. Um, I've often been placed in a situation where dialogue and cooperation don't exist because um, I'm just squeezed by the decision. Uh, city undertook a, uh, a hostile invasion by neighborhood when I allowed developers to move in that you're trying to improve the neighborhood in a well-known scam throughout the United States of the gate developers in four neighborhoods. Um, this caused me extensively. Um, the city's urban renewal thing also caused me extensively. Um, right now, it's pretty much in poverty. And, uh, I'm really alarmed that, uh, uh, the newest, a member that we've elected to the city council follows exactly in great lap days steps. Some person means that claims that their second property is their, uh, uh, primary residence. Um, and, uh, so but there is no chance for dialogue or cooperation. It's, it's gotten forth in the confrontation and conflict all the time. Um, of course, this has a, where am I help? Um, I, uh, campaign storage, big house of four hundred twenty six dollar a month currently to store the remnants of my business, uh, bookstore. Um, so, um, I would rather be running a bookstore than being here. But I see this as the only chance I have to survive in this community is to challenge these, uh, Tracy Barnes, who could be in, uh, uh, having two positions that allow, and probably her vote was the telling vote for uh, the new person to be on the city council. So I'm running out of time here. And so, um, looks like we're just gonna continue to be in conflict and confrontation. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Anybody else either in chambers or on Zoom would like to speak city council? Okay, next up, we have a public meetings planner. I just want to remind everybody the short-term rule, uh, county short-term rule, uh, meeting is Friday at break, six o'clock. Army Band is Friday. And I want to mention that, that after, week after next, we have, uh, co-council league meetings in a war. And so one city administrator and I would be at those meetings. I just have to decide what days I could afford to be there. And, uh, you know, so it's always, it's like a four and a half day affair and I could never stay more than seven days, so.
I'll be there for the whole thing.
Will you really? Oh, good. You're tougher than I am. Okay. Anyhow, that's about it. Anybody else has a public meetings planner? Okay, great, thank you. Uh, major report briefly. Hazel Miller was all from Saturday night, uh, one day. Uh, and she was, as always, fantastic. Great turnout at the table on that. Um, I don't know what the final number was, but it was between a hundred and fifty and two hundred people there. And, uh, she always, she always is, is a one for the table. Uh, please, the flowers are out. Thanks to our city, but uh, thanks to the Main Street program and our street department for, for getting that done. And last thing is the, uh, the army band is, is Friday. Okay. Council reports.
Yes, one, um, the city administrator, uh, made a note of this, but I just kinda wanted to emphasize it, um, in the report. Uh, speaking about a citizens oversight committee of some sorts for the police department. Um, it's a conversation that we brought up, or at least I brought up it maybe before, um, and it's a conversation that the community has had tons and tons again. Um, and quite frankly, this seems like the perfect time and place to have it when we are transitioning and we want to create a police department that is served for the community and really by the community, um, in, in both who we hire as well as um, who gets to oversee them. Having a citizen, um, or community oversight committee, uh, that has genuine influence over, um, policing is something that is tried and true. It's tested. It's, uh, not anything new. Denver has one, for example, and they actually gave a presentation to the, um, the, the grassroots, uh, group that kind of wants to lead this on. Um, unfortunately, they don't feel as comfortable speaking publicly about it, uh, due to fear of retaliation. However, that being said, this I think is step in the direction to where they can speak a little bit more publicly towards these things and I, I would like to think that we have, you know, nothing to fear, uh, especially if we provide the adequate facilitation and training for set, um, board and said board members, it would make of the utmost sense to have that not only as a system of trust between our community members and our police department, but also as a system of oversight for police, um, misconduct and having a, a non-militarized or non-police, uh, perspective behind it, um, which is often missed. Um, and I would hope that we can have that conversation in a more serious discussion and next steps of what we can do to, uh, go through with that if it is that council agrees with such things. And I would love to have that conversation on the agenda and as a public meeting. Um, so that we can invite those groups to kind of, you know, come out of the shell and come present as well as so that we can have a discussion as council. This is something that makes sense for us and something that we'd like to see um, in our internal police department. The idea is for it to also, we've heard it shared, but from my talks with, um, as well as, uh, Laurie Simonson was there. Um, he seems very open to the idea and is very open to having that in place. So it's very rare that you get an opportunity like this. And I think it's time that we kind of seize that opportunity. Thank you.
I'd like to comment real quick. I mean, I, I agree. I, 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 I liked it. We had it before. It was a city-county not necessarily government, you know, so much as, as a city-county, uh, effort and, and both the, the first police, police chief and the sheriff attended. I, I, I do disagree on some of the parameters, but we're not getting into that tonight. That's, that's part of the conversation. So thank you for that. Any other council reports? Sharon, thank you. I know you don't believe.
You're welcome.
Okay, in which case, any of those, that's not possible. Seven fifty-three, the city council meeting is adjourned.
So it's better than decrease the expectations.
Okay.